Thursday, February night. This means in person, but it can be viewed on local cable channel thirteen oh three or on the internet. By assessing townhallstreams dot com and selecting Bucksport. Questions and comments can be submitted prior to or during the meeting by emailing asksaside at bucksportmaine dot gov or during the meeting by calling four six nine seven three six eight. Roll call, Jacob.
Councilor Eastman.
Here.
Councilor Morrison.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bissonette.
Here.
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilor Ormsby.
Here.
Councilor Bishop.
Here.
And Councilor Rankin.
Here.
Presentation of any town council recognitions, I don't believe we have any. Minutes of previous meetings, we have town council minutes from one twenty-six twenty twenty-three and town council goals and objectives meeting minutes from two to twenty twenty-three. How the council like to proceed? Motion approved. Second. Questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Correspondence to all police calls, one on two one twenty twenty-three, one on one twenty-eight twenty-three, and a thank you from the robotics team. Ordinances to consider and introduce. We have second readings on chapter three, animal shelter. We have a second reading of the fee ordinance, animal shelter fees. We have a public hearing on those a little bit later in the proceedings. The next is a private holiday expression display area policy.
There's a public hearing on that as well.
There is a public hearing on that also. And then there's a first reading for change of allowed use in commercial three zone.
The, the planning board, our court officer isn't here this evening. Rich, do you have that information or?
Good evening. Yes, the planning board held its first meeting in regards to a change of a use in the industrial park to allow auto repair shops. Um, small engine and motorcycle repair shops are allowed there, but automobile themselves were not. Uh, the planning board approved that at its meeting this past Tuesday night and is bringing both forth to you for a first reading this evening.
Thanks. Any questions? Um, next is discussion items, Bucksport Bay Festival funding request, Richard.
I'm gonna wear a path out on the carpet.
I know that.
So I, I sent you a, a request letter asking for twenty-eight thousand dollars. And I realized that may not have covered everything that I was trying to articulate, so if you have a moment, I'd just like to let you know that what that should say is, um, we are requesting not to exceed twenty-eight thousand dollars, which breaks down as five thousand dollars for fireworks, twenty-four hundred dollars for the parade, eighteen hundred dollars for inflatables, uh, which was a slight adjustment from what I had on there for you. I put the actual prices per the different ones. Entertainment for nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, which was an opening act, a band and a headliner. Unfortunately, I just found out fifteen minutes ago that they are no longer available now, so I gotta go back to the drawing board with the crew on that. Included a sound system and a lighting system. I had incidentals on there for, uh, ten thousand, uh, to be more clear on what that was. That's online advertising like Facebook boosting posts for seven hundred and fifty dollars, banner signs and printing for a thousand dollars, T-shirts for a thousand dollars, TV advertising for a thousand dollars, a five K road race for a thousand dollars, a fishing derby for three hundred dollars, a cornhole tournament for five hundred dollars, and remaining miscellaneous expenses if we're not able to borrow certain things like we have been accustomed to, including a stage, tables, chairs, prizes, and so forth. But we're very late in the game. This stuff, when it was done previously by the Chamber of Commerce, was started in January and, again, we're asking to not exceed twenty-eight thousand dollars and we will be seeking donations, hopefully in the full amount of twenty-eight thousand dollars, so the town doesn't spend a penny, but.
Is there any revenue associated with this?
Uh, revenue associated besides the, um, uh, sponsorships, uh, vendors on the waterfront will be assessed the fee, uh, like they have been in the past to be here as well. Uh, we are going to extend the courtesy to our local nonprofits that there won't be a fee to have a table. And then, um, fees to enter the race and the fishing derby and such. We have another meeting tomorrow, um, to go over based off of the decisions tonight to really have the subcommittees that were formed really break down and get after that number. In years past, the council has approved, just for a point of reference, twenty-five thousand for the, uh, Bay Festival, twenty thousand to festival and five thousand for the fireworks and such event.
Questions?
What did it cost us last year?
Uh, the town did not put any money into it. The person who did it last year declined to do it this year because she lost a lot of money.
Ah, okay. What was that request last year from the other entity, do you remember?
Uh, she requested to not have to pay police, fire, public works, and waterfront crew.
And what would that cost?
What would that cost?
Yeah.
If we were to do it?
No, if we had fronted that bill.
If we had fronted that bill? I, I don't.
Three or four thousand.
The issue really wasn't the funding as much as it was the fact that the entity requesting the money was not a nonprofit, it was a business. A commercial business and the council determined at that time that funding a commercial business wasn't. If, if, then if someone, some other business came in and wanted to, money to do something, where does that go? The commercial entities were different than nonprofits or the town doing it. That was the thought process at the time. It was less about the amount and more about the, the nature of the business that was requesting.
Gotcha. Rich, what were you looking for for the entertainment?
Well, I thought we had a Ozzy Osbourne and Truvi band in Dakota, so Dakota does both. And they offered us a sweet deal because they're local.
Yep.
Except for the fact that as time goes on before we can cinch things, they've got to make money as well, so, um, in this case, he, it was an oversight on his behalf. He was already booked to be in New York, but with Ozzy Osbourne's, um, announcement that he's not touring any longer, they're getting very busy now.
Yep.
So, um.
Were you looking to do that like, like down the, um, by the dock area, like, like back when we did the Beatlemania one or is it weird?
The Sprague, the Sprague Dock, the Dead River Dock. Um, that's been talked about. Um, we had our very first meeting the Friday prior and we are meeting tomorrow to really get into the locations. If X is here, what does Y do for traffic control for people's enjoyment of the event? So, um, that was a consideration and then depend on electric, so.
Yeah.
I mean, if a generator handles that, then, then that's fine.
But you're looking at like a bigger show than previous.
A, a headliner, yeah. Uh, looking for a headliner and has some local bands as well, because we definitely want to support local and like Dakota's been here quite so many times and low to this point, we weren't able to make that happen, but he was very good in giving me other information, like sound system for a band of their, of that nature is thirty-five hundred dollars.
Yep.
Just for their sound system, then you also got to pay for lighting. You have to have a stage and such, so it's a lot more than just booking a band.
What weekend are you predicting to do this?
The date is July twenty-second. Remember, we have to work around when we have cruise ship traffic here as well. Not doing it around the Fourth of July because folks here have camps, they have traditions that they've always used and, you know, we want the biggest bang for the buck for not only the businesses, but also for the citizens of this town.
Is it a different weekend than the Bangor Fair as well?
Bangor State Fair starts the weekend after.
This is a one day.
This is a one day. Parade would start at twelve o'clock, the event would end with fireworks at nine fifteen, roughly twenty minutes, so that would end at nine thirty-five P M. The town staff has been volunteering their time. It's been one Friday, but they're coming in tomorrow, so no one's taking any extra money for helping prepare this. Everyone's doing it out of their love for the town and this event and will also be volunteering the day of the event if you so approve.
Rich, in, in, in the past, what does it cost whoever, the Chamber of Commerce or whoever took it over last year? What does it traditionally cost them for the festival?
So, when it was the Chamber of Commerce, uh, there was a fifteen thousand dollar fee to pay someone to do the event. We're not paying it, we're all doing this out of ourselves, so if you want to ask about that, then you, um, take what they received in, um, donations and that offset the cost to Shelby, so twenty thousand dollars for the event and five thousand dollars for the fireworks, so twenty-five thousand dollars. The last time the Chamber of Commerce put the event on was in twenty nineteen. We had the COVID years of twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one where that did not happen. Now, um, we did supplement that one year where the town didn't front any money, but we had the, uh, the ship that was here and that brought in a lot of visitors and the economic impact on that ship was very substantial. Um, it was the same weekend that Bay Festival would have been. Last year, when the, when the Bay Festival was done, it was brought the weekend of the Fourth of July. Her costs are different to add because she is the first group. Prior to when the, um, Bay Festival originally started, it actually had to pay for security or in this case, um, public safety, um, or for maintenance of garbage. So trying to compare hers to what the chamber did is kind of like comparing apples to oranges, but I would say if you're want a straight up answer, that's pretty similar. I'd say roughly twenty-five thousand dollars, because fireworks are five thousand unless you want to go big. And we did that for the two twenty-five. We went ten thousand that year and that was a big display that was almost forty-five minutes long.
You'd be at the helm and know an economic impact. Is the one day event gonna be worth fronting twenty-eight thousand for that kind of economic impact to the mainstream businesses?
So when you're talking about a one day event and an economic impact, you have to look at what did the event do for me? I may not stop in Andy's bookstore today because today I might have bought something on there, but I realize Bucksport has a cute bookstore and I'm coming back to support Andy. So day of the event, a lot of variables on what's gonna happen. Um, but long term, getting people in here, seeing how Bucksport celebrates, how Bucksport does fireworks, how we do things, I do believe you'll see repeat visitors, which will then have more of an economic impact than probably the day of.
Are you looking for a yay or a nay or a, are we willing to do it type of thing?
Uh, yes, I'm looking for, if, if we have to secure some type of funding before the donations come in, it's hard to ask for donations if we're not gonna have money upfront to do this. Um, and I would ask that, and I didn't put in my proposal that, that is a not to exceed.
And this would come out of undesignated funds?
Do you have any amount of donations from the past, like an average from years past that it was done?
We didn't receive those.
Those went to the chamber, those went to the chamber and I, I don't have an honest answer for you, so I can't speak for that.
Okay. We've talked about for several years of trying to do something in the town, by the town, for the town and I applaud, applaud Rich and his group for stepping up and taking this on. So I think where I said I'd, I'd be more than willing to not exceed what he's asking for and see if we can get something off the ground to get it going again.
The ten thousand for entertainment, how long do they play for?
So again, the acts that we had was a cancellation and, and that should have been nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, which included a sound system and lighting, not a stage, because I didn't have an honest number to give you, so I did not want to provide that. In years past, we've had, um, lumber donated and we paid for persons to build it, sometimes that was done free. Um, but, uh, Crazy Train would have been two hours and fifteen minutes uninterrupted, uh, a discount because we're in Hancock County. Um, Dakota would have been a thousand dollars a discount because we're here, um, and they're one in the same, they just changed their costume and that would have been fifty minutes. And the opening act would have been a forty minute show as well, so it, it would have started at four o'clock and ended at nine on the dock. Uh, but he did say had they come forward that if, if the crowd was a lively crowd, a great crowd, they would have played right up until fireworks went off, not to upset the people of fireworks, but to reward them for, for that. And there will be no beer tent.
So where does the ten grand come from if they were a thousand?
No, it's twenty-five hundred for Crazy Train, a thousand for Dakota, two fifty for the opening act, thirty-five hundred for the sound system, two thousand for lighting.
Okay.
And then a stage, if not donated like has been in years past, I'm assuming would be over seven hundred and fifty dollars. But I don't have a figure, that's the one thing I couldn't get my hand on to give you an accurate number.
What about rain out?
Rains and pours. We'll have tents, um.
So it's rain or shine?
It, it's a rain or shine event, one day event, yeah. When, when you're dealing with fireworks, it's nice to have a rainy day, um, and we could put a clause into that, it just wouldn't be the day of the event. Um, but this would tie in with the Fort Knox, um, they have the, uh, Civil War days and their actors would like to march in the parade and everything, so it'd be, uh, a mix and match, but yes, it would be a rain or shine, hundred degree day, sixty degree day. Um, we do have a couple, um, ten by ten tents that the town owns that we'd use for a couple of locations and part of that miscellaneous would be to get tents for protection of bands or whatnot as well. Vendors would be for themselves, they typically bring their own ten by ten tents.
Let's make a motion to, um, set a budget not to exceed twenty-eight thousand dollars from undesigned funds for the Bay Festival on the twenty-second. Second. Anything else? All those in favor? Opposed? Five to two, thank you. Next is, uh, agenda items, resolve twenty twenty-three thirty-nine, budget workshop schedule twenty-three twenty-four budget, um, in your packet, starting on April sixth. We'll go for, uh, six weeks in a row, um, alternating six Thursdays in a row, starting the first one on an off council night at six. And then, um, like I said, for six Thursdays in a row after that, um, regular council meeting at another six o'clock, regular council meeting another six o'clock and then public hearing on May eleventh for, uh, budget and then, uh, public hearing and adoption of the budget on June eighth. How the council like to proceed? Motion approved. Second. Any questions?
Tis the season.
Tis the season. All those in favor? Opposed? Next is resolve twenty twenty-three forty to sell lot three, phase one at the Buckstown Heritage Park. How the council like to proceed? Motion approved. Second. Richard?
Lot three, phase one is the last remaining lot in the original phase of the Heritage Park. It is situated between Berry Septic and, um, where Front Street Shipyard is located. Um, the person proposing the project is here. It's a good proposal, Downey's Communications is currently being run out of his house, he's outgrowing that space. Um, he's taking on a family business of Don Eastlong, can he run both businesses out of the building? And, um, I appreciate you taking this up tonight.
Questions?
What number of jobs will this create?
Uh, for this year.
Josh, could you come bring up here for us too, please, thank you.
Um, this year I'm already hiring two people for the lawn care. I have some part timers for the communications, um, and I'm hoping to grow from there.
So, three jobs altogether.
For this year until I, unless I get more lawns, then I hire more people.
So, and just in your application, I'm asking, it says by the end of twenty twenty-two, you'll have five employees?
Yeah.
You don't currently have that now or?
I, I don't, I am planning on hiring a couple more.
You have finance?
Couple of my people aren't, aren't coming back.
All right, and you also have financing in place to cover this?
I am in the beginning stages of doing that.
Okay. And again, I gotta ask, because it says here that it's verified with a financial institution, is that, Rich, is there something different with that or?
I spoke to the financial institution that he was working with prior to his trip and plans have since changed a little bit on the project, so a re-verification would need to be done at that point, but I just got that information roughly about fifteen minutes before the meeting started.
Is that contingent on this lot being?
Yes, yes, so what'll happen is, um, when the bank sends over the verification letter, if that's not approved at that point now, what'll happen is it'll come, a message will be sent back to Sue for the council to either rescind, take up a resolve to either rescind or extend the period of time.
Right, but does this, does having this lot prior to affect the financing at all? Do you need, do you need to have this lot in place in order for the financing, I guess?
Depending on the financial institution that he goes to, you can use the value of the lot as your collateral when you are looking to commercialize a loan. Typically, they're at a loan to value of eighty-five percent. Pema Quin Lusel Farm use that method in order to secure the financing that they got for their building as well. Now, there are some institutions you cannot do that with just because of FDIC and all that good stuff, so.
I thought we had done this with Pema Quin.
We didn't.
We used the lot.
Yes, yes, um, Pema Quin did, Greenhead, Greenhead did not, Pema Quin, Pema Quin did, it was a benefit.
No, I was just asking if that was in, it was part of the financing package, so.
Yeah, part of the issue is, uh, as we know, um, in several of the businesses that are using the same contractor, prices go up, delays and everything, so some of the businesses that we approved, we've had to extend, uh, give some extensions because, for example, it's the same development that Dave Mylan's building and the building wasn't done correctly, came down and went back up again. So the contractor came good, did everything he said, and he's now got three more projects that are going to be happening up there, so.
One of them yours?
I'm hoping to.
Hopefully it goes up right to the list. Any other questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next is resolve twenty twenty-three forty-one to award the loan bid for the twenty twenty-three plow truck, how the council like to proceed? Motion approved. Second. Questions?
You bought this truck in December of twenty twenty-one. It is supposed to be able to be picked up tomorrow, so that's how, that's how long it took for this truck to get produced and here. As I said, we're still, we still have an ambulance out, a sidewalk plow out and the pumper tanker rebuild that are all, were all approved in that same timeframe and none of those other items have made it here yet either.
Is it common for us to finance these now as opposed to buying them out, right?
Uh, what we've found is that spreading payments over three years levels your budget impact. It's rather than hit it with a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in one year, hitting it fifty thou, well, you know, sixty thousand a year for three years is a, a more minimal, um, budget impact line item wise when we're financing these, when we're funding them and we started doing that. We paid off one this last year, this year we're in, if we pick up another payment, the additional amount won't impact the budget because it's already built in.
This, excuse me, this won't hurt being a higher interest or seems like a higher?
Well, it will add some, but it, it's, it's not enough so that it takes it to.
Doesn't offset it, okay. No.
Did you get your question answered, Jim?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Any other questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Uh, next is resignations, we have resignation of Kim Delbridge from the appeals board. Do you have to take a motion on that, take? Motion to accept.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Passes? Quick claims, discharges and deeds, I don't believe we have any, town manager report.
There was a guest on Rob Carmichael's Mainly Matters podcast on Tuesday. I'm not sure when it will be posted, but I'm honored that he asked me to be a guest to talk about what is involved in being a town manager as a career, as well as some of the communities that I have managed over the past forty years. The, the W E R U interview regarding the verbal proposal by AIM for a public private partnership with the town of Bucksport and the landfill aired this week and the podcast with ICMA and Heart and Soul also posted on the ICMA website as well. I'm requesting that the council set a regulatory review committee meeting from five thirty to six P M before our next meeting in order to discuss the idea of the town adopting a landfill disposal facility ordinance that would give the town regulatory input into the future of the private landfill located in Bucksport. Buck Memorial Library is author Tim Cotton coming to the Alamo for a book signing and talk on Thursday, February twenty-third at six P M. I agreed for the town to provide the honorarium, which is three hundred dollars for him to come and the library is funding the Alamo costs. I think this will be a very popular event and it happens an hour before the council meeting that night, so hopefully we'll all get a chance to at least stop by and the attendance of this is free. I met with Superintendent Boothby to discuss a number of matters on February eighth. One of these is the upcoming budget, which has, in his words, some challenges. There are no hard numbers as of yet, but preliminary indications are that the combined increase in valuation of towns in the district is going to suppress state aid to education somewhat. Since most other communities in the state have also seen wild property valuation swing, Jim and other superintendents are seeking more information on just how that additional aid that has been cited for education will be distributed. The last remaining item that we need to develop in order to meet the third tier of the Maine Municipal Association Rich Management Services reduction percentage for our workers' compensation insurance premiums is a wellness program for our employees. I am in the process of developing one that could be adopted and then included in chapter two of the town code personnel section. And we have a meeting set up for February twenty-eighth with the head of the team that will be looking at distribution of funds from the Holtrachem settlement. I look forward to this opportunity for our team to discuss with her the goals of her team as well as the merits of our dock application and how that fits with the goals. I also want to let you know that Hannaford provided the ingredients for seventy-five lunches for the senior center today because the kitchen is still out of commission due to the, um, broken pipe during the person that closed it. And so we'd like to thank Hannaford for their generosity and the donation of the food that provided those meals. And then the final thing, on February fifteenth, which is a Wednesday, there's a one hour, uh, Zoom training offered by Bernstein Sure, it's not at a cost to communities, but it's for, um, education on appropriate response to the First Amendment audits that are being performed, that are happening at communities in which, um, people from an organization who post things on YouTube come into the municipal office or any other town department and, um, do a lot of filming, ask a lot of questions, there've been, uh, there's a lot of misunderstanding, um, in some areas about what's allowed and what isn't allowed and, and this, this, um, orientation, this one hour. Uh, I would like the opportunity to have all of the office staff view that, we can do it on this screen and it would mean that the office would be closed from twelve to one on the fifteenth, so that the entire office staff. Whoever is the first encounter for these groups when they come in, it's really important that everyone's educated on what the appropriate responses are to what is sometimes aggressive behavior.
That's it.
Thanks. Any questions? Rich, I saw in your report you got interviewed by the Portland Press Herald, what was that all about? What are you talking about? You just leave a cryptic note in there and.
Wasn't sure if anybody read my report, so.
I always read yours.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Uh, they were inquiring because the state provided to an outside source for another aquaculture project and Bucksport, the, um, Sprague North property was cited as a possible location. I explained the physical properties of the location, the fact that it's adjacent to where Whole Oceans would be building and, um, that lot's been for sale for X number of years.
Nobody's put an application and put a salmon farm in there yet though, right?
No, no, sir. It was one of four locations identified.
Thanks. All right, uh, public hearings, we have a couple here. Open the public hearing for the proposal to change the zoning of map thirty-two, lot one seventeen, one eighteen, one twenty-one, one twenty-two and one one twenty-two, and one twenty-six from Village to Downtown. Comments, questions? This was discussed. First and second reading both. Everybody understands what we're looking to do here? Questions from the crowd?
I, I guess. It, it shows the, uh, the lot where the church is, as running the church lot and the lot that is there on, uh, the corner of Central and, uh.
Franklin.
Franklin. It, it, it looks like it's calling that one lot. Is that, why would that be? Isn't that a separate lot from that apartment building?
Yeah, the church is.
On, on the lower side?
I would think so. You know, I mean, it, it just shows that everything else is numbered, all the rest of the, in photograph numbered.
It does this. What it does is it, and Luke explained it when he, but the, it moves the line up to the next level of lots beyond. This was where it was originally. Oh, it, it slides that line up to across here, and we talked about Dick Peterson being the lot that was part, would be part in this zone and part in the other zone that he wanted.
And, and it also, uh, involved the apartment building that's, that's across, uh, Buckland Lane from Dix.
Yes.
And, and also.
That, that's already in it. We did that prior to.
Yes. What I'm asking is, you see that, that everything is numbered, and, and the lot where the church is seems to be one piece with the, uh, the lot where the apartment building is, it's on Central.
Oh, it, it, it's because the, the, when this is copied, that it's darker, you can't see the numbers. These are separate lots down, you know, here, and the separate lots are in here, but the.
Yeah, there's, there's actually three lots there where.
Yes.
Yes, okay. It's just that it's poorly printed, okay?
It's, it's. That's, well, well said, Jim. It's poorly printed.
Yes, yeah.
Any other questions? Close the public hearing. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Public hearing opened. Change the fee schedule, commercial solar panel permit fee, and animal shelter fees. Any questions? Close the public hearing. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. I really like this club, just so everybody gets it. Open the public hearing for chapter three, Animal Shelter. Comments, questions?
Mike Hawes, um, wondering what we're, we're thinking as far as where our, what our options are. Like, is it? Do they know, do you guys know where you're gonna put it?
So, we had discussed behind the town garage.
Well, to the left of behind the town garage, on the opposite side of the road from where you go down to the Silver Lake Trails, but on the back oriented and fenced and all those kind of things, so that it was not behind the, behind the transfer station with the echo chamber.
Right. So.
But that's not what this is.
Yeah.
This isn't.
No, this, so what we've put, where, where we are with that is, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes, please.
Um, is that, we're, we're, basically we're sending it out for an engineering study, and a big part of that that we talked about was the sound deflecting the, the part of that engineering.
Right. Okay, so this is all the engineering.
This, what we're talking about this evening is some language changes to the, about the area, so, uh, in terms of like, uh.
Where it resides in, in our town code and who, and, and taking it away from the public safety department, actually putting it in our town code, codifying the rules and stuff.
Yep.
So, it says nothing to where we're gonna put it.
You drove out here on, with your life in your hands.
Man, I gotta ride that with her.
Yeah, but since you're here, that, one of the things we talked about at the last meeting when it came out of committee was a big part of that,
Yeah.
looking at that spot is going to be the engineering around both the building itself as well as deflecting.
And we're looking at other spots, too?
We don't really have any other choices. I mean, that are reasonably in town is what it came down to.
So, the other choice is to just take care of Bucksport dogs and don't do other towns?
That's not what's been discussed.
Okay. Maybe we should think about that.
That, that would still end up with sixty percent of the dogs that are.
That's so much better.
Well, it, the, sixty cent, percent of the animals, I'd have to sort it down between, but the
Right, right.
majority of the dogs that we get are from Bucksport.
Yeah.
Uh, that's the issue and, and whether there's, you know, eight there from Bucks, or five there from Bucksport, or six there from, or seven from other communities that, I, I, I don't think that behind the transfer station for a hundred reasons is a good location.
No, I don't think behind town garages either, because I want to develop up by there, and if it's there, I won't develop, so.
Where, where is your development in regard to?
Do you know where the, uh, the field is right there? We own right to the field, and that's right where that'd be. I mean, it's, it's right in the backyard.
Right to the?
The field.
The field where the trails are?
Yeah. Goes all the way up through, like, where there's screen and gravel. There's a house, like, you can see right there. We own the house. So, that's where that'd be. It would, it would stop it. If that, if that got developed there, it would stop that development. It wouldn't, it wouldn't do it. So, something to think about.
You were, you had looked, Mark, at.
Yeah, I had looked, and, you know, I found examples like a sound mitigation around yacht clothes.
Yeah.
And, you know, I'd like to think that can be done. I mean, where is the bulk of the noise? Is it when they're inside the building?
It's, it's at night, it's during the day.
All right. Again, it's inside the building, so if we can harness the noise inside the building.
Maybe. Is, is that a risk you want to take? I mean, I, I understand if, if you think it'll work, but if it doesn't work, we won't develop it, because why would you put a community with, I mean, it's, it's crazy. I mean, I'm the one that built it. I, I, I know I did, but it's now we're doing, I don't know how many towns, twelve, twelve towns?
I don't think we changed it. We took one on last year.
We haven't changed our population base. Our population base has remained the same since before I came here.
Twelve towns. How many towns?
They used to have, you had nine towns.
Nine towns.
One in was Hamden, which had eight thousand, seven thousand and some odd people. Hamden stepped away, and we replaced it with smaller communities, but we didn't exceed the population base that was formerly being served by the shelter, and that was on purpose
Right.
because we knew we couldn't staff-wise or facility-wise exceed what the town had been doing
Yeah.
right along, and that, that was the.
Yeah. So, I guess there's, there's gonna be some risk involved, so, I mean, if you think this'll, this'll work, then it'll work, but if it doesn't, that's what you risk, you know, and.
And so, everybody has perspective, Mike.
Yeah.
How many acres would, are left for you to develop, and how many units would be pulled out of that?
Quite a few, quite a few, so, I mean, we haven't zone changed it. We have to zone change it, so a lot of things would have to happen, but so we have a total of seventy-six acres total.
Yep.
And I think we have thirty, thirty-five, thirty-eight developed.
Yep.
So, that kind of gives you an idea, and it doesn't mean it would be the exact same way. It may not be a manufactured housing. I mean, it could be condos, it could be anything, you know, it could be selling lots, but that's a, that's an in-town, you know, it's, it's a prime location.
Yeah.
I don't know, I just think you, we ought to think about it a little bit.
And, and just, that, that, again, this, this isn't, then we're gonna have, we'll, we'll be able to have some more conversations when, when we get some studies back to
Yeah, yeah, I understand that, yeah. Sure. Yep. Okay.
If some of these other mitigation things work, but by all means, you'll be involved in those, too, so.
Yep. Okay, okay.
All right.
Hey, thank you.
Thanks.
Anything else? Yep.
Buffy Ware. I originally grew up down here, and I moved back to retire here. Um, I, my question is, are all of these other towns that we're helping house, are they going to be helping financially with the engineering?
What, I don't know what you mean. Of the building, of the building.
The expense, the expenses of.
The expend, the expenses that we get from all the animals go into that
Okay.
part, part of, those expenses are paying for the animal shelter piece, and this is part of that, correct?
Okay.
It, it is, but there, there has not been any discussion that, that towns that we contract to house animals for a fee and do those kind of things, and they pay a per capita to the town, to Bucksport, for belonging, whether they bring any dogs or not, this is a per capita fee, or cats. They, they pay a per capita, and then if an animal's brought in, the, the town gets so much a day for the fact that the animal's there, and any vet bills that are accrued are paid by these other towns. There's not been a discussion that the town would look to do like when Hamden, you started to, did a sewer system and didn't have a treatment plant, they bought a share of Bangor's, and they paid for the construction of, of that. There's been no discussion that other towns contracted with, um, Bucksport would have an ownership interest in the building, meaning have, paying to construct part of a building and then having some kind of ownership. And it, there's no, been no discussion of that. But the fees that, that the, the town gets offset the cost of the, the animals themselves, because they have to pay for those, and the per capita is just, since every town is required to have a contract with a facility that will take stray animals, that's what our system.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Close the public hearing. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Public hearing on private holiday expression display area policy. Anybody have any questions? Anybody know what the policy looks like?
Thought she did a good job putting that together.
Yep.
That looked pretty good.
Captured what we talked about last time in terms of changes, too, so.
Everybody's okay?
Yep.
Anybody from the audience have anything on that? All right.
Notice message does. I was just, I'm not playing with my phone. This is how I know if someone has emailed.
All those in favor? Oh, I need a motion first. I, I had a Jacob.
Was it brief?
Second. Have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second. All those in favor? Opposed? Passes? The last thing we have is a C, CMP pole permit, intersection of Jacob Park Pond and Barber Drive. Excuse me. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Passes? Next item is discussion, why it was not on the agenda for the council and the public. Anybody in the public have anything that's not on the agenda? Don?
Don White Town Farm Road, um, when I was growing up, uh, a dump was a thing you brought your car, truck to and threw, whatever you had, you threw over the side, and that's the way it was, and maybe somebody picked through it and picked up some useful items, and then maybe somebody brought over twenty-two and shot the rats out of there. Landfills and dumps are a lot different now. They're big. Um, I, if you don't realize how big, I invite you to the citizens forum that'll be on the twenty-third. Seems to be a popular date over at Brown Hall where we'll have, uh, friends from upriver who are gonna come and tell us what it's like to live there, uh, to live near it and to live around it, and what it's meant for their lives. I understand that the town has received another email from AIM regarding a possible, if you guys, uh, if, you may not be the only ones they want to do business with. This nebulous, we don't know what it means, could be a private partnership, they could sell it. They, 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 they may be feigning, feigning, they may be saying, if you don't do business with us, you'll get the trash and no money. Could be a bullying tactic, who knows? Who knows what it is? It could be serious. They could be, they could be lining up for, uh, hooking up with somebody that could, uh, follow the loopholes and send out-of-state trash up here in big numbers. This, this, this landfill dump scene is, we got a mess there now. Read the reports. Go up there. I go up there all the time. You've, you've got stuff. Here's the town drinking water, here's the river, here's the dump, here's the groundwater. Common sense, and it's happening. It's untreated up there. Uh, we got some issues D E P. God bless them, they're over, they're overwhelmed. They're understaffed. Their new hires are all dealing with the PFAS issues, which we have. Undoubtedly up there. We've got a lot of other issues. If I ask this council to be proactive and not get bowled over by a corporate or a state plan that could turn Bucksport into a possible huge mess, continued dumping for years of toxic material, this is what it is. There's no way out of this stuff. We've got to start developing, enforced development of good recycling centers, and it's starting to happen in Southern Maine. There is momentum now. I've been working on this since November, and there's good people working on it in good systems, but this is the last. We can't do this, no matter what. We can't sell, we can't, we can't sell our livelihoods, our generations for a bu, for, for some money. It's multi-generational issues. You'd be selling Bucksport down the river. So, I'm, what I'm, what I'm asking, what the citizens, I think, are asking, if I know, if I have a feel on them, and I do, is to get proactive and start taking some action before it gets, it gets where they tell you what they're gonna do. Thank you.
Thank you. So, somebody else with a hand up?
Yep.
Harold Morrison, out in Huey Town. Uh, before I get started, you and I had the discussion, uh, these folks prepared for me to ask a couple of questions. You told me, you asked me to, it's okay to go ahead?
Sure.
All right.
Then just, I, if they answer it, they're answering it, as we talked about the other time, they'll answer it honestly as they can to you.
Yes, that's what I'm hoping for.
Yeah.
Um, you asked me to get ahold of them individually. I just haven't had the time to do it. I've been doing other things. And also, I'd like to apologize. I actually had nothing to do with it, but the report that come out in the newspaper wasn't exactly what you and I talked about. I was not impressed with the way it was written, but I apologize for that.
Nothing to apologize for.
Thank you. Councilman Rankin, if, if I remember right, on the first time around, you either supported the motion or started the motion when the gully, end of our, the hour end of the gully road was dropped. What was the reason that you changed your vote completely?
When we sup, I supported it.
The first time?
Yep. And, uh, when we found out we had done, the town didn't do its due diligence, we rescinded it.
Right.
After that, I had, because before that, I didn't think anyone was really interested. After that decision, I at least had forty to fifty people contact me that they did not want that shut down. And we started to see with all the other people coming in after that meeting, to the following meetings, I don't think there's a resol, resolution. I think this is gonna be a civil matter between you gentlemen and Jewett, Ryber, the whole area. I just, I don't see the, this helping the town at all. It's, it's gonna put us right in the middle, in I believe, in a bad situation.
Okay. All right, that's, that's fine, thank you very much, appreciate your understanding, so. On, Daniel Ormsby, Councilor Ormsby, you reversed your decision.
Yep. Exactly what he was saying, it's impact, the impact behind it and the controversy it caused was costing the town money when it's a civil matter, and on top of that, I feel like there was attempts made, from my understanding, to kind of bring the, everybody together and talk about it civilly, and that couldn't and didn't happen. And I don't think that the town needs to pay for that.
All right, I accept that answer. The, the thing I don't understand is, as soon as it was mentioned by our town manager that this looks like a civil suit, that's the way the whole thing swung right off the bat, was go civil. And originally, it had nothing to do with a civil suit between the two parties, it was simply asked, shut down our property to the, to the general public beyond that graveyard, we were gonna leave access to the graveyard. But I needed to ask these questions, soon I know where I'm going in the wrong direction, or somebody is, because the information that I get doesn't add up. But that's why I'm questioning.
Yep.
And I appreciate your answer, both of you.
Only other one? The reason I changed my vote was similar to all they said, but in addition to that, we have Upper Long Pond Road, and if we did that for you, then we would have people in here from Upper Long Pond Road potentially saying, I want you to close the road so nobody can go past me. And I just don't, I don't wanna get into that.
Okay, I understand that, that whatever happens with this is setting the precedent.
Yep.
And so it has to be done cautiously.
Yep.
I don't need, you voted no, I don't need to question you, you had already told us two days before the council meeting that how you were gonna vote, so we already knew your answer.
And why was that? What was, what was my?
Costing too much money.
Because of your deeds that say you still have to allow access, that are in your deeds.
It is.
So that does not do anything for the town of Bucksport to fight that fight for you.
All right, so from this point on, I know I'm not here to discuss the gully road, I just wanted the answers to my questions. Thank you very much, you have a good evening.
You too, thank you. Anybody else from the public? Richard?
I just wanted to invite the council and the public to a downtown business connect after hours. On Thursday, February sixteenth at four thirty PM, it's in the industrial park at the Beeport Works, that's the building where, um, Auto Mode of Elegance, um, is located as well. It was the former building that was owned by Dean Oak. And if the mouse turns on, I'd just like to give you a quick little presentation, as we have received the first, uh, request for payment from a project that was done with the funding that you approved for the downtown improvements. This is seventy-four Main Street, this is a before picture. This is an after. Before picture, this goes into Bill Tomasco's office, there's an after. Uh, this was what the siding was, if you look down on the gra- ground, it, it was disintegrating, um, it didn't look very good, you could see some gaps in the windows. That's what it looks like now. Uh, a full, a full view picture. Now a full view picture, underneath you can see the openings, you can see lights just hanging down. Uh, I don't scan very well, so that's kind of upside down, but, um, it's filled in and you got recessed lighting. The total cost of this project increased from the time he sent his estimate, he still went forward with the project and he's still eligible to get the ten thousand dollars, but that project was an increase of over four thousand six hundred dollars to the project, so this is example of one of the projects that were accepted, I just thought you might wanna see some progress.
Local contractor?
There was quite a few contractors involved on that, I believe, uh, local as in Ellsworth was the locality. But I had that, and if you, that's seventy-four Main Street, if you haven't noticed, um, I don't have any pictures yet of, uh, Mr. Jakes's building, which houses Blush or, um, the Friar's Brew House, but there was an alleyway between Ms. Cirillo's property and the, um, the Friar's, and it was a a door that was kind of, didn't look very well, uh, he has since boxed that in, put a door, put a nice-looking window, vinyl sided it, put lights on the outside of the building, painted, uh, he still, I believe, has a little bit more work to do, but i- in my mind, the program's working, we're getting great results like that.
Good.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody from the coun- who?
Uh, Rich, was it the middle school girls who?
Yeah.
Yes, middle school girls, B basketball team, won the, um, championship today.
We may have heard the sirens going by during our meeting.
The sirens are here, but there is one more note as well, but, I'm sorry.
Matt McGinnis, McGinnis sent me pictures of these very happy girls and the scoreboard, which the score was thirty to thirty-one. So that's pretty awesome.
Thank you for reminding me, that, it does remind me to invite everyone, including the public, to the first home unified basketball game since our very own Chief Gagan was the head coach. It will be four o'clock on the fifteenth, uh, February, I believe that is Wednesday, so if you come and check it out, that is the true definition of sports right there.
Thanks, Rich.
Thank you.
Anybody from the council have anything, not on the agenda? Public hearings and committee assignments and committee meetings, we have, at our next meeting, we have two committees, correct, or is it just one?
Regulatory review.
And then, Miss, um, Luan Lawson wanted one else, all right? Oh, that's in March, she's gonna move that to March.
She had asked to move that to March, she was, is not gonna be ready at the
Okay, so we wanted to go five thirty to six?
Yeah, I, I did five thirty to six, that should be enough time to look over what I have, and that gives the council, if they choose, an opportunity to go to the Alamo, just to see the
Perfect.
library, Tim Cotton thing, if you want to.
Is there a time we can send a services committee meeting for board of appeals appointment? That'll take all the five minutes.
Can we, can we do that the first meeting in March? Will that be, will that give you time?
Is there sufficient members on the board right now for the appeal that the town has in front of it?
As of right now, all three members would need to, uh, show up and all three men to, for a forum, and all three members would have to vote in the same manner for any action to occur.
Okay.
So are you saying that we should have it the next meeting then?
No, the, the hearing is, is before our next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think first meeting in March.
Okay, six forty-five, we'll go from there.
So if, if there's three people now presently on that board?
That's correct.
A quorum is not two?
Quorum is three.
And are we doing services at six forty-five or right after regulatory review?
Oh, we're gonna do six forty-five on the
Just prior, oh.
That's in March.
March, yes, okay.
It's five thirty-six on the twenty-third, right?
That's correct.
And then at six o'clock, Tim Cotton's down there, we wanna go to that.
Yeah.
Community and economic development is meeting Monday at six o'clock down here, our agenda, we have an update from Inspire Golden Bucks, and we have two projects being presented for twenty-seven Main Street.
That will also be streamed, correct?
That will be streamed.
What day is that again, Rich?
That is this upcoming Monday, the thirteenth, six PM.
Last item is adjournment?
Motion adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Motion adjourn.